Good evening and welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. I will note that we do have a quorum this evening, although Commissioner Lucas has not yet arrived, hopefully he'll be joining us shortly. And so I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin as customarily with a moment of silence. So would you all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll move on to planning commissioner announcements. Do we have any -- and let the record note that Commissioner Lucas is present as predicted. Do we have any announcements from planning commission tonight?
I do.
One, we have one.
Yeah. If you could show the overhead, there's going to be a kick-a-thon that's hosted by the American Karate School, which is located next to Nibble Nook there on Saturday, May 16th, 10:30 to 12 at Coleman Park. And the proceeds, kids are collecting the money, the proceeds, half of the proceeds go to Project Surf Camp and half for a karate summer camp for the kids. And for those of you interested in participating and helping with this, you could just, pretty much just go to the 400 Quintana and pledge there or find one of the little ninjas running around. Anyway, thank you.
Sure. Michael? No. I'm sure there's people out there that would like to get us involved in a kick-a-thon, but we're not doing that. Okay, so this is a period for public comment. Anyone who'd like to make a comment on an item that's not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, give us your name and we'd love to hear from you. Seeing a mad rush to the microphone, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have on the consent agenda this evening, the minutes from the February 3rd and February 17th meeting and the current advanced planning and processing list. Any comments or issues on the consent agenda?
I believe on the February 17th minutes that the recorder should be Scott as opposed to Rob.
That's correct. I was just checking. We probably also need to amend the February 3rd set of meetings to reflect that Rob was actually at the meeting because he was there.
I have two comments. On the February 3rd notes on page four, I know I don't make sense sometimes, but there's something about two-thirds of the way down where I don't make any sense there at all. And if I remember the discussion, it was about gray water and it had something to do that if we, if we use the gray water concept, we potentially could increase the number of residents through a similar amount of water being used. So that sentence about two-thirds of the way down.
Where it says Commissioner Lucas stated what producing the effluent might increase in numbers?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with that one. All right. And so what were you saying that you were?
I was talking about the, in one kind of concept of gray water, we might be able to increase the number of residents by using the same amount of water.
Okay.
That's why I was intending that to say. And then on the February 17th meeting on page two, it actually showed up as a purple bubble on my notes about a safety issue on the tower. And I think I asked the applicant that where, what is the distance before they start marking notice of safety concerns? Because they'd had a previous project come through that had notification about safety concerns relative to the antenna. And I was asking, what is the distance in this type of project that they would have to put a sign on? I think that's page two of the February 17th notes.
Okay.
And then on page six of the 17th notes, I think it's near the top of the page, it says about the Schumash proposal, and that's kind of ambiguous. I was talking about the Schumash Heritage Marine Sanctuary proposal.
Okay, so do you have those corrections? Yes?
We're good.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adopt the, I'm sorry, are there any comments or any remarks you'd like to make about the calendar, the pending processing list?
No, just receiving file.
Okay. So with those corrections, are there any, do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar with, as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
In favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Moving on to public hearing, the first public hearing this evening is for case number UP 0407 and AD 0-097 regarding a proposal at 966 Pecho Street here in Morro Bay. And I think Joan's going to talk to us about that.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before you do, I live within 500 feet, so I'd like to excuse myself.
I'm sorry, yes. Promised I'd give you a chance to do that and then I totally didn't.
Moving too quick. Thank you, sir, and good evening commissioners. The item before you this evening is a request for conditional use permit and parking exception approvals at 966 Pecho Street to allow an addition exceeding 25% of existing floor area for a single-family residence with non-conforming setbacks and to allow a single-car garage with tandem parking in the driveway to provide for the second required parking space. The property is located within the R1 single-family residential zone outside of the coastal commission appeals jurisdiction, south of Morro Bay Boulevard, west of Highway 1 and to the east of Kern Avenue. The house was built with a one-car garage similar to other homes in the neighborhood. Current requirements of the Morro Bay Municipal Code for setbacks in parking render the existing structure non-conforming. The side yard setback requirement for this property is five feet. The existing home sits at 4.37 feet from the east property line. The front setback requirement is 20 feet and the home sits at 19.67 feet currently. Also, the existing home has a one-car detached garage, again, where two covered and enclosed spaces are required. This is the existing site plan. The applicant is proposing to provide one covered space in the garage, one space tandem in the driveway. And with the garage located, as you can see, towards the back of the property, there's more than adequate space to accommodate the tandem parking space. So pursuant to Morro Bay Municipal Code Section 1744.050, for individual residences, one tandem parking space may be allowed subject to the approval of a parking exception and certain standards or exceptions to the parking standards require that certain findings be made. First, that a tandem space in the driveway will provide adequate onsite parking for the use and the length of the driveway is adequate. Most dwellings in the surrounding neighborhood have a one-car garage and so this will therefore not constitute a grant of special privilege. Second, the tandem parking will not result in a traffic safety problems because the space is located outside of the public right-of-way and site distance is more than adequate for vehicles maneuvering both into and out of the driveway. And thirdly, the applicant's parking proposal is reasonable for the full enjoyment of their property, given similar parking arrangements in the project vicinity and given the footprint and construction of the existing structure on the site. This is the proposed site plan. Municipal Code Section 17.56.160 requires the approval of a conditional use permit for projects proposing additions in excess of 25% of the existing floor area to non-conforming structures. The applicant's proposed to add 575 square feet to an existing 958 square foot structure. The addition is shown here on the left-hand side of the site plan shaded in gray. The floor plan, the proposed floor plan illustrates the addition of a hallway, bathroom, family/media room, and storage space. And approval of a conditional use permit requires that certain findings be made as well. First, that the addition is in compliance with all applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance, including setback and height limits. Second, the applicant is required to submit a complete building permit application and obtain the required permit prior to construction. And third, the project is in allowed use within the R1 zone and is compatible with surrounding neighborhood development of modest one- and two-story, single-family homes. And lastly, it's not feasible to make the structure conforming because major reconstruction would be necessary to meet the required setbacks and to accommodate the two-car garage. These are the elevations, the front and rear elevations, showing the proposed single-family addition and its compatible design. These are the east and west side elevations. It's important to note also, you'll see on the existing or, well, existing and proposed site plan that the porch area, the front decking area does encroach into the right-of-way and one of the conditions of approval is to get an encroachment permit for that. So staff recommends that the planning commission approval of the requested conditional use permit, UP 0407, for the proposed addition to the non-conforming structure, as well as approval for the parking exception number AD 0097 for the second tandem parking space. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Joan. Are there any questions on this? Michael?
Joan, these stay forever with the parcel or are they conditional based on this presentation?
I believe they run with the land.
Okay. Can we condition it in a different way?
Can you alter it so that they don't run with the land?
Yes. I guess my biggest concern is that if we start granting a number of these, which, I should save my comments till then, I'm concerned that if we grant something based on a modest proposal now, in the future, someone comes back and makes the thing twice as tall. It's a one-story addition now, but if someone would attempt to come back and do two floors on both of the areas, that's my concern, is at that point, it's becoming a major amount of construction and we've grandfathered something in like this that benefits, I think, a modest construction.
You mean as far as the parking exception goes?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm thinking about how I, I mean, certainly we can come up with something to frame it.
You can keep thinking.
But I'm trying to think of what that would look like.
Scott wouldn't have to come back to us as still as a non-conforming structure to be approved if there's any other proposed building?
Yes, and we have limitations on the number of times. Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be back here anyway.
Yeah, so regardless, the planning commission will see it again if they try to, they try to do it again?
Correct, that's the way.
Try to add to it? Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I had the same question and I guess I'm a little confused because we dealt a couple of months ago or month ago with a parking exception that had expired because the project had not been initiated. So there seems to be some connection between the project and the exception.
Well, it was an approval and then it got beyond the timeframe for the approval? Is that what you're talking about?
The project approval.
It was an approval for two years and then we didn't grant the extension that was requested for 1,000 Ridgeway?
Right.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't grant the extension.
Correct. So that just seems to be a connection between the project and the exception.
I mean, you sort of memorialize the, you know, once the project comes forward, it memorializes the permits that were issued for it. So those permits do run with the land, but you would again, see them again, you know, I mean, if those additions that came forward for the second story or what have you, that would be coming back to the planning commission. At which point, there would be discussion about, you know, the parking issue and whether, you know, it's time to bring up the parking requirement or not, I suppose. I guess we could frame the condition on the project that way, that any subsequent proposed additions, you know, just to make sure that it comes back to planning commission will be, will require a planning commission review. And if you want, we can frame it, you know, as it relates to the parking issue if you want. So future planning commissions understand why you conditioned it that way.
Right.
I think that's probably appropriate. I mean, our, in our, in our record-keeping process now, we would find, you know, we would go back and look and see what was approved in the past to see how we got here. So we would find that.
So it would come back as another conditional use permit and at that point, the city could say, one of the conditions of this particular remodel is you're going to have to have two enclosed parking spaces.
Time to buck up and bring us the two-car garage. So, yeah, we could certainly, we could certainly frame the condition that way so that it's understood that it has to come, so everybody understands that it has to come back and what the issue was before the planning commission at this time. So there wouldn't be a question as to why you were requesting it to come back. We could certainly make the condition reflect that.
Okay. Are you, are you good with that, Michael? So, other questions?
I just want to be clear. In other words, what you're saying, you can't just come back with a parking exception and no project on this, the way it's going to be framed, is that correct?
Well, you're, is requesting the parking exception this evening. So if you were to grant the parking exception, I think.
For this project?
For this project, which is the addition that's before you this evening and we're bringing the parking exception with it. The idea would be what happens later on when they come back and they want to add 1,000 square foot to the second floor? And you're saying, wow, well, how come they get to add the second floor without, you know, addressing the parking deficiency that they have? They, at that point, that's a huge addition and they should, we should at least have the discussion about whether they should be providing two parking spaces. And so you want that to be reflected in the record or meaning the resolution that says, we want this to come back to the planning commission if that were to happen, even a modest addition. We'll just do it for any addition.
So, yeah, I think, to put it another way, I think that even though the parking exception does not, does not take precedence over the conditional use process, so they wouldn't have this exception sort of as a right in the future, yeah?
Yeah, they can come forward in the planning commission. We want to add a bathroom. The planning commission could look at it and say, bathroom time, the parking exception stands, we're not going to make anything else. That's okay. Mike, please?
Sorry. So, so you could, I mean, so you could make that decision. I think the point is just to bring it back so we can have the discussion.
Right. Good. Eric?
On the separation between the detached garage and the proposed building, what is the allowable distance between those?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Without any extra fire code, fire?
Yeah, without going to a one-hour separation or something like that? That's correct. Or having to deal with openings or anything, yeah. Six feet.
You know, on my plan, it was marked red on the openings. You've got, you've got openings opposing each other directly. You've got windows opposing windows and doors opposing doors. Is that?
My understanding is, I mean, although this will be obviously reviewed by the building department when they, when they submit, the minimum separation is the six feet and so there's no concerns. Once you get closer than that, that we have a problem.
Okay.
And that you'd be able to address potentially one-hour separations or what have you, could potentially have that protected openings, that type of thing.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to open this up for public comment and if possible, we'd like to hear first from the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Good evening commissioners and chair. Chris Parker, the architect on the project. Clients couldn't make it tonight, but I just want to let you know I'm in the audience if you have any further questions. I think Joan kind of presented the project pretty well and it's a pretty modest addition, keeping it below the existing ridge line. I believe it's surrounded by two stories all the way around it, but we're, we're just doing a modest addition on this and asking for the parking exception.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? Not, we'll bring it back to commission for comment and hopefully a decision. Let's start with Michael tonight.
At school, I'm also known as the Minister of Paranoia, so I'm always very concerned when I see a bathroom next to a wall that's got two feet of clearance that this is a studio in the making at some point for a two-unit project, which I don't have much of a problem with, but it's a nice party room, but it also could be a little studio unit. So I'm with our conditioning we were discussing earlier. I'm happy with it, the way it is.
I took a cruise around the neighborhood and there is two-story homes pretty much surrounding it and I, I feel that this is about as modest of an addition as you can have and it keeping, keeping the height limit and I think it's a pretty good project.
Gary?
Just have some questions for staff regarding the lot coverage. We were right at the maximum. It seemed like those, the front patios might have been over 30 inches. And what about the existing shed in the back? Is that going to remain or is that going to, is that counted in the lot coverage?
It is. However, just today, I'm sorry, I had forgotten to speak on that. The lot coverage calculation was actually a bit much in that the first two levels of that front patio are under 30 inches. The other ones, as you go closer to the front door, are over 30 inches. So subtracting out those front two tiers, they're at 43% lot coverage.
Okay. And then where did the shed come in to play in that? Is that, I wasn't able to see the shed. I didn't want to encroach on the neighbors or anything to walk to the back. So what's the, what's the condition of the shed and is it going to remain or is it, was it counted in the lot coverage?
I believe it was counted in the lot coverage and it is on the proposed site plan, so I believe it does remain. We can speak to Chris about that.
But it is, it fits in underneath the lot coverage then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, you know, then I, those are my, my concerns with the, with it, that seemed like we were getting really, really close to the lot coverage.
You and me both, that's why I double-checked it.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I don't, I really don't have any issues with this project. I think it's, I think the scale is very appropriate to the existing residents and to the neighborhood and I'm glad we addressed the future parking issue and I would support adding a condition to the effect of what we discussed. And I'm glad we discussed the fire issues because that is a little bit of a concern potentially and may require some, some work to, you know, make sure that it's safe. But otherwise, I'm certainly prepared to support the project. So I believe, unless there's other comments, I believe we're ready for a vote.
I'll make a motion or try. I'd like to, let's see what resolution, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, make sure I have the right one here, PC 12-15 with the comment regarding parking on, added to that.
With the added condition requiring any future additions be brought back before the planning commission for review, specifically making note of the concern related to the provision of conforming parking.
Perfect.
Exactly.
Well, that is planning condition five.
What he said.
All right. There we go.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a second? A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Then let's have a roll call, if we could.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stausky?
Aye.
Commissioner Lurie?
Aye.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Yeah, can we let Commissioner Sorensen know that she may rejoin us? Okay. Thanks, Joan.
Okay, so having duly shuffled our papers, we'll move on to item number B2, which is
case number CP 0-459 and UP 0-401 regarding a proposed development at 361 Seashell Cove in Morro Bay. And I believe that Cindy's going to talk to us about this one.
Good evening Chairman Teft and members of the planning commission. So this item before you is coastal development permit and conditional use permit applications for new construction of a single-family residence on Lot 4 of the Seashell Estates subdivision. This is a newly created subdivision approved by the city in 2009. This is the first lot to seek approvals under this tract 2870 that was approved. And on the overhead slide, you see the vicinity map, which shows that the subdivision is located to the south of town, nearest the Bayside Community Care Center, excuse me, off of Teresa Drive. The proposed home application is 2,664 square feet with a 616 square foot garage and 320 square feet of decking. Here's a closer aerial map that shows the location of this address, 361, which is Lot 4 of the subdivision. So it's at the back of the cul-de-sac, farthest east or almost farthest east. As part of the conditions, covenants, conditions and restrictions, CC and Rs that were approved with the tract, each of the 10 lots are required to obtain design review committee approvals prior to obtaining city approvals. However, the CC and Rs have an exemption that the declarant is exempt from DRC approval and therefore, the planning commission is required to act as the DRC approval for this particular project and review the project for consistency with the design manual as well as general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning ordinance standards. So I'd like to call out an error that I have in the staff report and this was just brought to my attention. And unfortunately, the error in the staff report translated to the error on this slide. So this says that the property is zoned RAPD and while that is correct, the zoning that is RA does not stand for residential agriculture. It actually stands for suburban residential because of course, A, you would think suburban, but anyway, I apologize for that error. So the RA zone is intended for estate-sized lot homes. It's intended for a larger lot size. The minimum lot area per unit in the RA zone is actually 20,000 square feet per unit. This subdivision, though, was approved as a cluster subdivision pursuant to our city's subdivision ordinance. And so you'll see that the lots are smaller than that, but it was approved consistent with our subdivision ordinance. And then it has a planned development overlay as well. And there was a conditional use permit for the subdivision as well as for tonight's The proposed home meets all development standards for front, side yards, rear setback, lot coverage and height. And staff would like to point out that the maximum height limitation for homes in this subdivision are 18 feet 6 inches from natural grade. And most of our properties in town have a 25-foot maximum height limit. and most of our properties in town have a 25-foot maximum height limitation, with the exclusion of the beach tract, which is 14 feet. This subdivision is 18 feet 6 inches, and it is within the, does meet within all of those requirements, including height. So in this slide, you'll see the site plan, and as part of the tract approvals, each of the lots were established with a predefined building envelope and building footprint size that each applicant, each lot owner, will be subject to building within. The purpose of that was in order, as part of the cluster subdivision requirements, and in order to conserve open space and preserve maximum amount of natural vegetation. The site plan shown here for Lot 4 shows this maximum building envelope of 3,600 square feet, and the proposed home garage and decking that I referred to earlier is an aggregate 3,600 square feet. Okay, my pointer is not working on this, but on the left side of the slide, you'll see that the home is set back in excess of 25 feet from the property line, and that is part of the drainage swale easement setback. So the home is a little bit further to the, what would be the south, closer to the cul-de-sac. The next slide shows the floor plan. It is a split-level, single-story home with the required parking, the two-car garage, the guest parking space, and then the various bedroomed bath and other amenities. These next slides will show you the elevation, and I'll just walk through these, and then I have some visual simulations to show you as well. This is the, it says front elevation on your plans. This is actually the west elevation, so front, if you were facing Highway 1, and you can see there is, excuse me, my pointer's not working. The cul-de-sac, you can see that on the right there, or at least that's where it would be if that gray is actually the cul-de-sac. Here's the elevation for the north side of the property, which would be left. So if you were coming south down Highway 1, and you look to your left, you might see this image. And then the right elevation, and the, and actually, the way that the topography is, is when you're heading north on Highway 1, you don't see this until you are actually right at the cul-de-sac. And staff did some drive-bys of the site to kind of take into consideration aesthetics and views, according to the view from Highway 1, that is. This is the rear elevation. This is from the east, and the, along the east, of course, is going to be vacant. And then here's the first of the visual simulation slides. So the design manual that was approved as part of the recorded covenant conditions and restrictions, the CCNRs, which was provided to you via email, is, excuse me, the design manual describes that buildings are required to blend in with their immediate surroundings and not overwhelm the surroundings. Some of the design manual requirements are that the second-story floor area is limited to 75% of the first-floor area. This project does not have a second floor. Rear forms are required to be a coherent part of the building that reflects the natural slope of the site, and in this design, you see that the, it does terrace with the natural slope of the site. Some other key points in the design manual, garages can be attached or detached from the home. Material finishes are also specified, which allow redwood or cedar siding board and wood shingles as an exterior siding material. Colors are required to be earth-tone, muted, and create a synthesis with the surrounding landscape. And this, this is going to be from the west side of the property. I'm just kind of moving forward as I speak. Private fenced yards are allowed on the north side of the home, which is shown on these plans, in order to be screened from Highway 1, a designated scenic corridor. Designs for homes are required to be simple, natural in appearance, and free of artificial appearing geometric patterns, such as evenly spaced straight rows or trees or shrubs along driveways or property lines. A landscape plan is required, as would be under the PD overlay requirement as well, which identifies plant materials and locations of proposed vegetations, and that was provided in your plans for you. And then also, it's important to note that there is a height limitation for trees and shrubs, as called out in the design manual, and that is subject to the same height limits as the building, so they can't be more than 18 feet 6 inches. And then this would be another simulation. If you, this is approximately standing in Lot 2 or Lot 3, looking toward the building. So this would be west of the building, the home. So in addition to the design manual requirements that I just described, and as stated earlier, the project is located in a planned development overlay, and many of these requirements that are in the design manual meet or exceed the requirements set forth in our planned development chapter in the zoning ordinance. And this is also further described on page 5 of your staff report, and then also, it is also described by the applicant in their project description, which is Exhibit C of your staff report. So moving on to environmental determination, environmental review was completed for the project as well. The project itself, as construction of a new single-family home, is eligible for a Class 3 categorical exemption. For the subdivision, an initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared, which required mitigations on the tract. Included in this were aesthetics and biological resources, which are discussed in detail in the staff report. As far as aesthetics is described in the staff report, no structure is allowed to obstruct or silhouette the ridge line when viewed from Highway 1. So accordingly, the applicant has submitted a line of site study, and you will see that on Plan Sheet A5 of your plans. And this demonstrates compliance with the maximum home elevation, can't be more than 18 feet 6 inches, and that it's, it shows that it's below the ridge line. And then under biological, staff has added conditions, planning conditions 1 and 2, regarding the pre-construction surveys for nesting migratory birds, and also for special status plant species. As part of the tract approvals, excuse me, in 2011, there was a mitigation and monitoring report that was prepared by Althausen Mead, in that that identified the botanical species and the nesting birds that were present on the site. So in order to ensure that this project does not impact these nesting birds or plant species, we have added that planning conditions 1 and 2. So as stated, the project has been designed to blend in with the surroundings, consistent with the design manual, as well as the city's general plan, LCP, and subdivision approval. The design manual, as recorded with the CCNRs, sets forth that all future building be in compliance with the vision of the subdivision. Included with the CCNR requirements are that all proposed homes for the subdivision be subsequently approved by Planning Commission. Staff has reviewed the project according to these development standards. However, due to the detail and thoroughness of the CCNRs and the design manual, and because the buildable envelope was defined for each lot as recorded on the tract map, staff is recommending that Planning Commission review and consider allowing the remaining lots that are outside of the appeals jurisdiction to be processed as an administrative coastal development permit, as laid out in Resolution 14-15. The project would still be consistent with the planned development overlay requirements, because since the lots are required to obtain DRC approval prior to any city approval, the DRC requirements for the subdivision meet or exceed the submittal requirements of the PD overlay. Administrative coastal development permits would still have the same level of noticing for owners and occupants within 300 feet of the property, as would a regular coastal development permit before Planning Commission, and they would also still have the same appeal rights to Planning Commission. As analyzed in the staff report, and then as presented in my presentation this evening, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review and approve the requested coastal development permit and conditional use permit for 361 Seashell Cove through adoption of Planning Commission Resolution 13-15, and that also staff recommends that the Planning Commission review and adopt Resolution 14-15, which would allow an administrative CDP process for those remaining homes of the subdivision that are outside of the coastal appeals jurisdiction. With that, I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, are there any questions for staff?
Richard? I got one. In the history of this subdivision, wasn't there a requirement for affordable housing to be built first before these lots were to be built on?
There was. As is required of any subdivision of 10 homes, there's going to be a requirement for affordable housing. For this one, they were approved to pay the affordable housing in lieu fees. There was a proposal for workforce housing, and that project was not a part of the approvals of this project. They were two separate projects that happened to be submitted, excuse me, by the same applicant, but the subdivision approvals for this weren't not, were not tied to that, and that workforce housing project was withdrawn, and so that was not a part of this project's approval, if that makes sense.
Can you describe, because I get a lot of questions, describe to me what the operational definition of workforce housing is?
So workforce housing, if I recall correctly, is definitionally considered to be someone who's making 120% of the county's area median income. The last statistics I saw on what is considered area median income for the county of San Luis Obispo, for a family of four, and they tend to always use statistics in the form of family of four, for a family of four, our area median income is about $78,000. I think that's 2014 data. So 120% of that, my math's not best, but I would say, I don't know, $96,000 grossing up 120 of that. So if there was a project, and it was workforce housing, and it was limited to folks making 120% of area median income, it would be someone that falls within that income threshold. But that kind of project was not part of this approval for the subdivision. At one point, the two projects were under review by the city, but they were always separate.
Okay.
Gary?
Yeah, I beg to differ with you on that. The two, from my memory, I was sitting on the Planning Commission at the time, and I think Commissioner Lucas was also, and when it was brought forward, it was brought forward as, as a, because this was such a special property. It's a Keystone wedge property. That's getting, basically, it was a wedge issue. It's a wedge property to open up that whole side of the, on that side of the highway. It was brought forth and was considered in tandem with the workforce housing, and was always in conjunction with the workforce housing, and it was approved with the workforce housing. And it was also approved as a high, you know, we approved these CCNRs that they were going to do the highest level of environmentally conscious building, and that was, that was their pitch, and it was brought forward to us as such. So I don't see any, you know, I guess this is comments, but, but they were supposed to include solar panels. It was supposed to be essentially net zero, net zero construction. This is extremely conventional construction, and although the aesthetics are appropriate, the tone has changed considerably since it was approved, since it was approved by us in our, in our initial commission. So I'll wait, I'll wait for further comment.
Are there other questions for? I just had a question about the, and maybe staff can enlighten me on this, but the question, I noticed that the two streets involved here are, I guess Teresa Drive and Seashell Cove Street, or whatever, are remaining private. Under what circumstances would we require dedication to the city, and why are we not requiring dedication to the city?
Well, the subdivision was approved a while ago, so the conditions that went along with it, the city could have required it to be dedicated to the city, and I'm not sure that it wasn't necessarily offered. Maybe we rejected it. I'm not sure. Kathy Novak is in the audience. She may be aware of those specifics. I'm not sure. But you make those decisions, like we, the issue becomes maintenance. It's sitting out there by itself. It's not close to the interior of the city, and so they are choosing, or maybe they chose to take on the maintenance of the roads, and so the city didn't. There are a number of different factors that figure into whether we accept streets or not, and oftentimes, it has to do with maintenance. They form an HOA. They're required to maintain their streets, and the city's not then on the hook to maintain those and keep them paved and slurried and sealed, and all those types of things that cost money. Obviously, you're all aware of this, of this status of the city's streets and the ongoing maintenance issues that we have, so it's not a surprising thing when you have a subdivision that comes in, and the city says, hmm, you're going to take care of those. So those are some of the reasons why it might be, you know, not having been here then, I'm not exactly sure of which one of those it was, but that's not an uncommon thing.
And are there, are there conditions in the CCNRs that relate to street maintenance and requirements for the condition in which they will be maintained?
I'm being told that there's a requirement for a road maintenance committee.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So, yes.
Thank you. Okay. So seeing no further questions, we will move on to public comment, and beginning, as always, with the applicant or the applicant representative.
Good evening, Chair, Taft and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak. I'm here from Novak Consulting, and I'm representing Mr. Bob Zengrade for his project at 361 Seashell Cove. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff for their time and assistance with this project, and also the recommendation for approval. For my presentation tonight, I'd like to begin with some background details on the project, and then I'll discuss some of the individual house details. The original subdivision project began in 2004. However, the project was redone in 2007 and brought back to the city in 2008 with more information and under the new subdivision ordinance, which provided more detail and criteria for the city to use in evaluating this project. All along, Mr. Zengrade had a vision for this property, which was to construct nice homes that complement the entry to Morro Bay. To that end, Mr. Zengrade has felt that the only way to be assured that these homes were thoughtfully designed for the surroundings, conserved open space, provided a natural setting, and more, was to create a design manual that would be approved by the city and ultimately recorded with the CCNRs. The design manual was created by the project team that also happens to be the same project team that has designed and presented this first house to the city for approval. The idea of the design manual and many of the components and design principles were fashioned from a project in Northern California called Sea Ranch. The design manual is quite extensive. It covers location, orientation, design, landscaping, and open space, to mention a few. This manual is there to help each owner and their designers to understand the philosophy of the Seashell Estates. The design manual also leads with a shared vision for this project, which states, quote, "Living gently with the land is a phase that has been used," or phrase, excuse me, "has been used to describe the way of life at Seashell Estates. It also expresses an approach to an architectural design that is about respecting the existing character of the place and unique context of each building site. It is about building in a manner that is appropriate to this special place," end quote. In addition to the design manual, the subdivision via tract map set out design or development limits on each of the 10 lots. This limit was for setbacks, some for biological mitigation purposes, and also to establish a building envelope in this area for future home sites. The property owners are allowed 3,600 square feet footprint in which to locate the home, garage, and decks over 30 inches in height. The homes are also allowed up to 1,000-square-foot private fenced yard area, limited to the eastern side of the home, and a 2,000-square-foot unfenced private open space area. The 2,000-square-foot area is restricted to landscaping, retaining walls, uncovered above-grade decks, patios, and walkways, and shall be integral and adjacent to the house. The building envelope is designed to float across the lot in order to position the home in such a way to minimize grading, avoid significant natural landforms, step the floor levels to conform with the natural grade, and function with the other homes, and more. levels to conform with the natural grade, and function with the other homes, and more. Once each lot has established the footprint, as does this project, the remaining area of each lot, but not limited to the open space easement established on the track map, will be left close to the existing natural state. In order to develop each individual lot, a process was then set up that required each homeowner to be responsible for providing the city with detailed plans and the design work that could be reviewed and evaluated for consistency with the design manual. This is somewhat like the city's precise plan process. Now that I've covered some of the important background points on the vision of the project and the development guidelines, I'd like to discuss some of the specific details of the proposed house. Since the design manual is so comprehensive, I've provided the city with an extensive list of specific sections that require either design review committee approval or special consideration. Staff has included this in your report, so I hope you found that helpful. I'm not going to go over, cover all the items in there, but I would like to say that many of the required items were created in order to harmonize with the natural setting, fit with the topography of the site, neighborhood compatibility with recognition for neighbors' views and space, and design principles including height, size, and mass. First, there's the height restriction, which limits the house to 18 feet 6 inches above natural grade, and the requirement that structures cannot obstruct or silhouette the ridge line from Highway 1. As noted in your staff report, the home meets those requirements. In addition, there is an attachment to the plan set that demonstrates how this home does not silhouette against the ridge line. Second, this project is a low-profile, split-level home that steps down the natural site contours. The shed roof is sloped to mimic the natural forms of the site, and the exterior walls are stepped and offset to create smaller wall areas and reduce the apparent size, bulk, and mass of the structure. Third, the building footprint and private fenced yard area meets or is below the standards set in the design manual. It also exceeds the minimum requirements for setbacks and lot coverage. Fourth, the exterior home materials propose cedar siding so that it will appear natural and blends in with the surrounding environment. Both the siding and asphalt shingle rules are non-reflective materials. The other materials used for the windows, the doors, the rails, and the walkways are proposed of earth-toned values, which are designed for compatibility with the adjacent area. Fifth, the plant materials and landscape design have been carefully selected and laid out to comply with a plant palette that is part of the design manual. These plant materials are subject to the same height limitation as the other structures on the lot and can be held to a height limit that otherwise would block neighboring views or shade of property. The plant selection for this home is mostly grasses and low shrubs with a few smaller trees for articulation. These were used specifically to meet the design manual and also because larger screening trees will stick out and that it will look unnatural on the site. Last, the homeowners and designers and others are encouraged to include green building concepts that have been included in the design manual. This proposed project contains several green building concepts such as natural landscaping, solar control, solar access, thermal performance windows, energy-efficient appliances, equipment and lighting, and interior finishes with environmentally preferable materials. In conclusion, this is the first house proposed for the Seashell Estates, so the project architect has taken great care to design a home that can be used as a model for the future homes and is in keeping with the goals created in the design manual. He has integrated the philosophy of the location, the orientation, neighborhood planning, design principles, and amenities for contemporary living. On behalf of Mr. Zengrade, I would like to respectfully request your support for this proposed home as presented in your staff report. In addition, he is also supportive of the staff recommendation to process the other coastal development permits administratively. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and also one of the project architects is with me this evening, so if you have any technical questions for him, he is available also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this topic? So then, let's open it up to questions for the applicant or agent.
Kathy, in reviewing the design manual, and I read through this, and about 50% of it is really renewable and green components to, you know, the design, and I know that on, you know, on number 65, it said, and I think Commissioner Lurie had brought it up about being solar, at least pre-plumb for solar, and in reading in the staff report, it said no solar panels are proposed, the infrastructure can be added by future owners. So you're not even pre-plumbing this for...
Let me check with the architect, but I believe we are pre-plumbing it, but we're just not installing the solar panels.
Okay.
That's correct.
Then this kind of is somewhat misstating.
Sorry about that, yes, definitely pre-plumb, so it would be, the owner coming in could install the solar panels, but it will be plumbed for that.
And I do want to compliment both the applicant and staff, this was a very comprehensive package that we received.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Kathy, and maybe Mr. Poults, can you maybe elaborate? Is there anything that exceeds Title 24 in this project at this point?
Let me ask Andres.
Can you desert even a little seeds, Title 24, can you answer that one?
Good evening, my name's Andres Yulaté, and I'm with Poults and Associates Architects. So I think we're going to address all those things in the construction document phase that we haven't really gotten to. There are city mandated requirements for Title 24. We're just not quite there yet, although the intention is to exceed.
And I guess Kathy, or maybe staff, you've had a chance to see the, what's his first comments for the applicant, right? No more comments.
Kathy, in 2004, who owned all those lots?
The same gentleman that's proposing the house this evening.
Okay, so he bought that whole section there and then did all the infrastructure improvements and all that?
Yes, he's owned that property, I think, since the late '60s or early '70s, and he also owns the property next door where the care facility is.
What's his name?
Mr. Zengrade.
Okay, and then, on the, so on the original submittal, that was in 2004, you mentioned, and then 2007, something happened, 2008?
Correct. Before, I wasn't working on the project back in 2004, there was another firm working on the project. They presented it to the city, and there were some issues regarding the subdivision. So the project was basically sent back. Mr. Zengrade decided to make some changes to the subdivision, and in the interim in 2007, the city adopted its new zoning ordinance. So when we came back with the project in 2008, we presented the project to the city for evaluation under the city's new subdivision ordinance, which allowed this cluster development and some other items, I think, was better than the original subdivision ordinance. The original subdivision was kind of difficult to read. So anyways, we brought the project back, and when we did, we brought it back with the design manual, so we spent considerable time trying to develop this design manual to give the city some additional tools to work with.
That's it for now.
So Kathy, from what I understand and looking over the plans, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see any passive solar calculation done on this. I haven't seen any energy calc's done for daily solar loads or insulation.
Correct, and I think that the architect was trying to answer the question that a lot of that particular materials would be developed at the building construction phase, and all of those Title 24 requirements and things would be done at that particular time. But there is a lot that he's proposing right now, especially with interior, with the energy-saving appliances and et cetera, so a lot of that will be fleshed out at that point in time.
I don't see any delineation of gray water facilities or water catchment or any of that on the landscaping plans. Am I correct in that?
Let me check double second, I'm trying to remember if we had the gray water.
Do you remember if we had gray water in this?
I don't recall, to be honest with you, but if that's something that you'd like to have us consider, we're happy to look at the landscaping plan and do that. There are a lot of, what we're trying to do with the landscaping plan is to make things as natural as possible, except in the location around the house, like we, is defined in the design guidelines. So the outside areas that are going to be left in natural state, of course, there won't be any systems out there to be watering, that will be just natural.
Good, thank you.
So what about, Kathy, what about rainwater capture? Is there any facility for rainwater capture and reuse?
Not at this point in time, but again, if that's something that you'd like to see, please let us know, we're happy to address that.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there, so we already asked for other comments from the public, so we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do I have a volunteer that would like to go first?
Go ahead.
Don't fight over it.
Cindy, I assume, since this was sent to you by one of our citizens about the questions about the SEQA guidelines, you're standing by what you've got in the report, that you feel this is a minor structure that doesn't need to go through SEQA review?
Yes, because the SEQA review was already done on the subdivision, so...
The subdivision itself.
Right, yeah, this is just construction of a new single-family home, which meets Class 3.
One of the issues that, you know, is brought up is the aesthetic related to Highway 1. Well, that's why you have all the design guidelines that are built into this, and why the original project and subdivision were found to be consistent with that. That whole review took place as part of the subdivision, and that's why you have all of the specific architectural guidelines, and they're comprehensive in nature, and that's kind of over and above what you normally see because of that corridor there, so that's why it's exempt, because it's compliant with those things, and the determination was made back then that these things would make the project compliant. Now, it wouldn't be necessarily compliant if the planning commission said, well, your design's not consistent with the design guidelines that you adopted.
And let me just interject one thing. If I could suggest, if I could suggest, maybe we have a discussion on PC Resolution 1315 first, and then we will come back and do another round of discussions on 1415. Does that work for everybody? Yeah?
Then I think that's all the questions I have for staff, if we're doing questions again.
I think we're doing, I think we're in discussion now.
In discussion. My recollection is very much like Commissioner Lurie's. I do remember a subsequent historic event where they got split, and that they did come back and say they weren't going to build the workforce housing. The workforce housing was nestled along the top of the little rocky ledge in the back, and it was beautiful. It really was great. It was little, tiny, beautiful workers' housing, and I was brokenhearted when that part didn't get done. But I do remember, in people of my era, you know, Sea Ranch was the, one of the great projects, and the picking up of that kind of aesthetic here was something that made the decision, you know, possible, because that, you know, is a trailblazing property, and if we were going to have to have it built on, we wanted to have something that was going to be nice there, and there didn't seem to be any way to not allow it to go forward. I mean, I remember back then, it was an extremely controversial project, because it's such an open piece of land. But I think that was then, and my biggest comment is that I think Title 24 caught up and passed the guidelines. I think it's way out in front, and I don't think, I don't think this does much more than meet the code at this point. So that part of the marketing strategy is, I think, negated, because everybody's got to be there. So I would just encourage discussion about if it is to be, if things are not put in that were stated that were going to be put in, I think that's something for debate. I think it's a really, really tough project, because it's the first one. Part of me wants to think that the best that it could come out is that it has sort of the stealth capability that some of the housing on Los Osos Valley Road by Sunny, across from Sunny Acres has. But I don't think it's going to be that stealth, because I don't think we have as much landscape to mitigate it. But again, that, as you mentioned, a lot of that was discussion at the planned unit development cluster development phase back when, and I remember asking our planning director then, at the time, couldn't we get the street narrower? It just, and that was, the fire department required that, and, you know, couldn't we tuck a little bit here, nip a little bit there, and I think we got about as good as we were ever going to get. I think the guidelines were, the aesthetics are wonderful. I don't have any trouble with the house. I'd love if Morro Bay built wooden houses with shingle roofs. I think that's the best thing that we can have here. It's more sustainable. So I share some of Commissioner Lurie's concerns, and I'm certainly open to talking about grain water, rainwater and rain catchment, gray water and rain catchment.
This project, you know, there was, when I first came on the commission, there was a commissioner talking about being in a box and not looking at anything but the box, and we had a discussion about precedent. This project is the kickoff project for developing that whole side of the hillside. That's the reality. Here's another piece of reality. In 2000, in a letter from the city to the regional board in 2007, late 2007, '08, there was $6 million available for infrastructure, collection, infrastructure, upgrade. A lot of that infrastructure upgrade was used for the lift station at Quintana and Main, and upsizing, or repairing one force main and putting in another one. So essentially, to help facilitate this development, that infrastructure, basically, you doubled the fluid pumping, sewage pumping capacity of this. And, you know, we, as a board here, as a, you know, as a commission, we answer to the council. Now, I don't always agree with the mayor or the council's decision on certain things, especially when it comes to infrastructure repair. And one of the things that I think that we, you know, some of the things have changed since 2004, '07, '08, '09, and one of them is we're in the most severe drought in California history. AB 52 has passed, I think it's 52 or 55, the one that mandates Native American review. The other thing is, on a side note, road maintenance, road maintenance, putting it off to somebody else and not having it in the city, I'm totally against that, because eventually, if that road goes down, our first responders are going to have to deal with it, be it a water line break, be it a sewer line break. They're going to, right now, the way this project sits, all that is expanding their sphere of influence and responsibility, okay? I would, in order to be consistent with what the council's doing recently in doing, reviewing subsidies, and also the way they're handling some of our water issues with surcharges, to have a surcharge, I would venture to say that I would like to see this project tabled. The planning commission, take a look on how much was spent to upsize that infrastructure at lift station and Quintana and Main, and the two force mains, and the roundabout, because the roundabout came about because it would have been cost prohibitive to do the off-ramp with Caltrans, so they put in a roundabout, and then a bunch of infrastructure was upsized. And I got a bunch of photographs, if you're interested in the ASBILTS, you know, but all that infrastructure was upsized. I would like to see, to keep consistent with the city does, table this, go and take a look at what the cost was to make, help facilitate that this development can happen, and then take it to the owners, and then maybe 10%, where they can pay... take it to the, to the owners, and then maybe 10%, where they can pay in non-refundable upfront cost to be able to develop this, because we, we are in a drought situation, and we are in a situation where we don't even have, we, you know, we're operating under a 301H waiver at the sewer plant, we don't have the infrastructure. So, I would venture to say that we table this, get that information, and then maybe establish a letter to the council stating, if we are to develop something like this, we create a surcharge upfront, maybe it's 10%, that'll be like, you know, 100 grand on every million spent for these infrastructures, and then, from there, they can go forward. Also, looking at the water, we cannot, you know, when you're looking at water, we cannot count on reclaimed water, we don't have it yet. Don't count on things that we don't have. And I think that this project is very, it's very, you know, I have to be very leery of the, you know, of starting and then a new development in the times that we are in right now, just the overall times. As far as the design, you know, the design guidelines, that's all secondary. We need to, we need to look at, you know, the residents that live right now, they're being asked to pay, okay? And with, you know, to run a D-SAL surcharge or whatever, and a lot of that money that was spent to upgrade wasn't used to fix other lines, like at 1840 Main. So what we need to do is, we need to not keep passing everything down to the ratepayer. This is a, you know, these could be, this is a speculation, you know, people speculate, you know, for property, and then this is, this is something that, what, we shouldn't burden the citizens with if somebody just wants to speculate. And that's why I look at it like, this particular project is, it's, it's one house, but it's, you know, you're looking at, you know, a precedent here. That's all I got to say about that right now. Did I make myself kind of clear? Are you confused?
I'm not confused, because the development's already approved. This is a single-family home, like any other single-family home in the house, in the, in the city, I mean, and it's subject to the same impact fees as other new development would be. Got a note from Kathy Novak sitting here that they did pay their fair share for the sewer lift station upgrades that were done. There are conditions for the track that reflect those types of things in here. As far as the, you know, the street goes, that decision, that's also in the original track approvals that date back to 2009. When I look through here, it talks about it being a private street, so that, that decision was made a long time ago. So, a lot of those things are already, you know, accounted for in how individual, single-family homes get approved. We're not talking about approval of a subdivision today. We are literally talking about approval of a house that is no different than any other house in town. Or any other lot in town, sorry.
Certainly, it's routine for communities to, to ask subdivisions to pay for the cost of off-site infrastructure improvements that are necessary to support the subdivision. But again, that occurs at the subdivision level, and that's, I don't know what the specifics are, I don't know what in 2007, and 2008, and 2009, the city required the applicants to pay, but that process, I assume, was pursued at the time.
Well, back then, also, we were, they were still talking about a wastewater treatment plant where it's located, okay? Back then, we, we now know that, that the infrastructure, yes, it had to be upgraded, but, I mean, it had to be corrected, there was a force main that needed repaired, but these, there's a, there's a difference when you fix something and when you have to upsize, and their fair share, I, I question, I question that whole, whole process that it went through. And I think that what we're looking at here is, I don't, I think that with the, with these, with this project, I think that we should revisit the CEQA, CEQA issue. I'm not sure that this project is, it already went through the system and is okay not to, not to go through a proper CEQA review.
Well, see, those are two different, maybe two different issues, but I think, I think perhaps in terms of infrastructure improvements, I think what Scott's saying is that the horse already left the barn on that, on that issue, as far as the subdivision.
The original resolution that approved it had a utilities and service systems condition under Public Works, and it says the developer shall pay a prorata fair share to the city as an impact fee toward the construction of municipal sewer improvements as determined by the engineering division in accordance with the water and sewer system master plan. So what happens is you have a water and sewer master plan, it identifies the upgrades to the system that need to be made in the areas, and so it, so then when you, project comes forward, you look and see what areas are affected by that. Oh, this development's going to feed into those lift stations, that sewer line that needs to be upgraded, or whatever it is, and then you calculate what that fair share is, and that's what's, that's what's applied to the project. That's a standard procedure, cities do that consistently with new development. It's, this condition, I, after seeing the note, expected to find it, and did.
What was that amount paid?
I would have no idea. I would have to go back and, and research it.
Could we, maybe the applicant can answer that? We'll reopen public comment for that purpose.
Yeah, apologies, I don't really remember the figure offhand, but what happened at the time was that the city was going through and identifying that sewer lift station upgrade. And at the time, they basically, the city said, basically, if you move forward with your subdivision and you build a house up there, you will have to do the sewer lift station upgrade, and then when the city gets the other folks around, then we'll reimburse you. As it turned out, the timing was just perfect with the way that the subdivision came and the city doing the sewer lift upgrade. So the city actually had hard costs of what the sewer lift station was going to cost, because they'd already gone out to, by that point, I think they already gone out to bid. So rather than coming up with just a, an id formula out of the blue, the cost that this developer paid was actual hard cost, because the city had those costs, because they identified them from the construction bid for that sewer upgrade. So hopefully that will help.
What was the number?
I don't remember what it was right off the top of my hand, that was...
Okay, because the reason why I'm asking is that that lift station was not up, up, upgraded, it was actually upsized with two force mains, that I know. And that means your capacity has been doubled because of that development. So I want to know what amount was paid, not only for the lift station upgrade, but for those four mains.
Well, you know what, if Rob Leibig was here, I bet he could probably answer that quick question in a heartbeat. I just do not honestly remember what the cost was, but we worked with a city engineer that had the identified cost from the bid, and said, you calculated that those 10 homes, what those 10 homes would put into the system, and that's how they came up with the prorata share that he needed to pay. He can't be forced to pay for 20 homes' worth of sewer work when there's only 10 homes there, because the municipality can't do that. So it was the actual cost that Rob had that passed on, that's what paid.
Right, I understand that 10 homes, we had workforce housing, and there was the...
But the only time that the workforce housing would have paid into that fee is if that workforce housing project would have come forward, and at the time, then that project would be conditioned to pay for its prorata share of that sewer lift station up, upgrade. So there's another piece of property out there, if they decide to ever come in and try to do, build any homes, they will be tagged also with their prorata share for the homes that they bring in, on the impact on that sewer lift station. So each one of the individual projects that's on that side of the highway just pays its prorata share for its particular project, it doesn't pay for the project right next door, for example.
Okay. Catherine?
Well, I feel the aesthetics, the landscaping plan, the size and bulk of the home is very consistent with the design manual, and I actually think it's a very attractive home. I am a little disappointed with the green building amenities, and I really think that as you go forward, those can be certainly beefed up. And I think Commissioner Lur, Commissioner Lucas spoke to that, and I did a little bit earlier, but all in all, I think that it does fit with the design manual and what the view of what this community would look like.
Jerry?
I think there's, you know, for me, there's two major issues here, and I'll address, I'll address the first one, I think is the one we have most control of right, right now, is aesthetically, the only thing I would, I would really concern myself about, and I would make comment on, is that the massing of the roof, I think, is too plainer. I don't think it's articulated enough. I think it's going to read as a, as a blank spot up on the hill, rather than a more, a more natural form that we were looking for in the design guidelines. You have several thousand feet of single plane in that roof line, and what we were looking for in the original design guidelines was a more articulated, a little bit more natural form to, to the roof structures, so that they would break up and they wouldn't all hit the light at the same time. This, what more concerns me about this is that it doesn't follow either the letter or the spirit of the green building concepts that, that they themselves espoused while we, to get this, to get this subdivision through. That was a major benefit that they proposed as a model subdivision to allow this subdivision to go through, and what they proposed here is nothing short of greenwashing. They have no, no consideration of passive solar, they had, they have not done any calc's, this building will, will, will not, I do not believe it's, it's oriented towards, to utilize the passive solar, I don't think it's, all it does is create shade and not, not, not accept any of the solar gain. You have no consideration for gray water, you have no consideration for water catchment. These homes are supposed to be essentially net zero, there is none of that in here, and with what I've seen so far, I do not trust them that they will put it in at a later date. Until, and I think that was, you know, and I have to, I'm sorry, but I have to berate staff on that, that they did not follow through on the design guidelines to compel them to do that, to bring that forward at this stage. If they want approval of this project at this stage, it should, this should have been in, in the project, because it's in the design guidelines, and it is spelled out in the design guidelines that this was a major component of these CCNRs. And all they're proposing is, you know, appropriate flooring, basically. There's nothing more than, you know, as Commissioner Lucas said, in this, nothing more than a standard track home for, that would barely meet Title 24. So, unless we have some major conditions on this, I cannot approve this for that project. The second, more esoteric issue I have was with how this subdivision and how other, how this subdivision proceeded through the process. And it was put forward while, while I was on the commission, that this was a contingent of workforce housing, and we were going to be getting an incredibly great, you know, it was actually a really nice contingent of housing that would have helped the moderate, for moderate-priced housing, and would have solved some workforce housing for the seashell development. As soon as this subdivision got approved, and we, we asked for conditions on the subdivision when it came forward, that, that they would be bonded, it would be, it would be tied to the workforce housing process, and that they would go for, go forward in conjunction. And as, it's happened time and time again in this community, it happened over at the Cokes Project, where we're now actually getting some, some, you know, senior housing over there, but we were supposed to get that senior housing on, on, that's, on that development, and then we were supposed to get the workforce housing on this development. And that has not, you know, and, so we're getting one of the two, and this happens time and time again in this community, and this was not supposed to happen with this, this development. So, that's my, you know, my soapbox on that, but, and I don't see how we can, we can fix that. As far as the, the infrastructure that was brought forward, this, the infrastructure was tied in with, that we approved, was tied in with, with improvements to, the road improvements at the intersection of South Bay and, and, and the freeway. So those intersect, those intersection improvements were done, and we were looking, and our thinking at the time was that, that the city didn't have any money for road maintenance, so we were going to have the developers handle the road maintenance and handle the, the infrastructure improvements at the time, and that was the best we could get at the time. So, but what we can control here is, this is not a signature green building, this is a track home, greenwashed at best. None of the components that actually make it work are included in the plans, and at this point, I don't trust that they would be included in the plan, so that's where, I want to see them. Thank you.
Well, I don't, yeah, I just, I guess I just, you know, I feel like we need to, I mean, I understand your frustration of the process, believe me, but, but, but I, I do think that it's important to understand, we cannot go back and relitigate the, the development agreement here, or the, the approval of the subdivision. I think what we can do is make sure that the homes that are built are built in the, to the letter and the spirit of the, of the design requirements. Now, I would like to go back to the whole issue of solar energy, that the design guidelines say very specifically, solar energy will be encouraged. And I think if this is the flagship house, if this is the house that all the others are going to be modeled on, I think to not have solar panels on the roof does not meet the standard of encouraging solar energy. So I'm going to suggest that, I'm going to suggest that if we elect to approve this project, rather than simply continuing it and asking the, asking them to come back with, with improvements, which is the, the other possibility, that that be contingent on it being redesigned so that adequate, and I'm going to have to rely on people with more technical expertise than I to know what adequate is, solar energy and water heating provisions being incorporated into the, into the roof. The, there's, you know, the other issue is we're, you know, we're relying very heavily on these design guidelines, and so I, you know, we're sort of putting the design guidelines here in place of our normal zoning code and, and local coastal plan, and so I think we need to be very meticulous in making sure that the, the design guidelines are adhered to, and there are, there are several minor issues here that do not adhere to the design guidelines. One is, in my opinion, is this long fence going along the eastern side of the property. The whole idea that I got from reading the design guidelines were that this was going to be an integrated community, where homes would not be separate from each other and from the environment, and there are very, there are several places where it says very specifically, section 4.1.6 says, "Property boundaries should be de-emphasized." Section 7.8, 7.8.1 says that fences may not be used to define the perimeter of a lot or large portions thereof. So I think that fence needs to be redesigned in a more natural way. In this, in the same vein, the trash enclosure is made part of that fence, whereas the design guidelines specifically, 5.10, specifically say that fuel tanks, garbage containers, and similar services equipment shall not be visible from the neighbors' property. and similar services equipment shall not be visible from the neighbors' properties or from the, from the road, and shall be contained in an enclosure that is constructed as an integral part of each building. So the trash enclosure has to be attached to the house, not to the fence. So, so that's, in my opinion, that doesn't, that doesn't meet the, the intent of that. And the second is the, the fact that you've got a six-foot fence, which is essentially extending into the front yard. It, it sticks out for about 12 feet or so beyond the corner of the garage. And again, this is not consistent with the idea that fences should not be visible from other properties and from the highway. So I'd like to see that fence shortened. I'd like to see the trash enclosure relocated. I'm not sure what they're defining as their private fenced space, since there's no enclosing fence on the, on the front of that, that long fence. But I'd, I'd like to see that brought back to a location where it won't be as obvious to the neighbors and to the, to the community. And I would also like to see rainwater reclamation be included in this. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of porous surface on this plan. There's one, two, three, four, five different patios, it looks like, all of which would be permeable and would be perfectly suitable. The rain that falls onto those permeable areas could certainly be collected into cisterns and reused for landscape watering. So if this is going to be a green project, I think that needs to be considered. And I would, I would like to consider making that a condition of approval, or something to be dealt with if we decide to bring this project back. So that's my comments. Any follow-up thoughts? Any?
Let's just take a look at the big picture here. We're in the most severe drought California has ever experienced. We are kicking off developing a whole hillside. This is not consistent with what our situation is right now. Right now, the citizens that are living here are being burdened with surcharges for running a DCAL, are having to move a treatment plant, 70 million, and piggybacking or subsidizing or whatever agreement was there before, you know, the budget, the, the city is worrying about the budget, going after or talking to business owners. This, this is not like a regular house development like we have in our existing neighborhoods. This is kicking off a new development. And I think that in these times that we are in right now, this is not, not a good idea. I'm opposed to this project.
As far as the infrastructure, I think that's, I think the subdivision has handled the infrastructure. And that was handled at the, at the subdivision review. What we have control of right now is, is the building and the, the production of the, you know, moving the building forward or not moving the building forward in this specific design. What I have a real problem with is we were trying to, this was sold to us as a concept division that would be the model that, that the, the new subdivisions or that side of the hillside, or, you know, that side of the, the city would be developed on. And I would like to see them hold up their end of the bargain. And I just don't think that this plan holds that up. And I would like to see more passive solar, I would like to see solar, passive solar calc's, either the German passive solar, you know, standards, or the American Passive Solar Institute standards. And I, because I just don't think this house can, can hit those standards. And I would, I would be happy if they could show that to me. And that's what, that's what we were supposed, supposed to get with this. A Sea Ranch-style development with up-to-date energy technology. And this, this doesn't do that. So whether we can condition that on this present, present project, or whether we bring it forward, we continue to have them bring it forward with a new, a new plan, I, I think that's the discussion I would like to see.
I, I can go along with Commissioner Lur's points. I do think the, the wall that's shown on the north side or east side, I'm a little perplexed about that. I don't think there needs to be a fence there. They're, they've obviously created a minor shelf in the construction process to mitigate some of the slope. It looks like on the site plan, it's only a foot and a half high. But I'm not sure if they have, I'd like to see the, if it's a retaining wall, leave it as a retaining wall. I believe two and a half feet is the maximum before you need a rail. I prefer not to see a rail along that entire length. It looks like it's about 75 to 80 feet of length in a straight line along there. I don't see them taking advantage of the height that they develop on the east side of the roof. So I'd be, I'd be interested in seeing if they, they couldn't have a different roof, especially over the car, carport area. It seems like the roof over the living area is broken off from the other main sections. But I, I would, I would rather mandate, I'd rather have them come back and show. But I do think it's critical that, you know, with, with certain gray water systems, if you can reuse the water two or three times, that starts to mitigate some of the issues with the number of houses that potentially could be built there. My sense, though, is that the, the lift station would have been sized more based on the areas that had been proposed down toward the mobile home park. There were other projects under, under consideration there that were significantly larger than this or the adjacent parcel. And I bet that in the engineering that the city did, it's not this one or the adjacent estate site as they were claimed. It was the nature of the housing that was built, planned to be built on the south side of Black Hill. But I'm, I'm not sure. That's my guess, though. Because I think that came up the first time back around that, that era as well. So I'm, I'm sympathetic with the, I, I certainly appreciate Richard's point of view. And I'm a, I'm a big advocate of fees should be what they are. They, they should reflect the actual thing. The city has been a bargain for many, many years, that the residents have been subsidizing permits, and significantly less than San Luis Obispo. So I would, I would just say I'm all for meeting the goals and the letter of the design guidelines, which would include some of the things Commissioner Teft and Lur were talking about, and see if we can do better.
I would actually prefer to have them bring it back, as opposed to try to condition the approval at this point in time. I do recognize that they do have to have a privacy fence, you know, certainly if they have small animals or whatever, they need to contain those. But I do, I, I do think that it does look a little overwhelming, and...
And it's enclosing, for, for a good bit of its length, it's enclosing a walkway that's two and a half feet wide.
Yeah, it's, it's not usable.
You're going to be recreating that.
Yeah. It could be a dog run, and that's about it. But I also, back to what I had earlier said, I, I really do think additional time and effort has to be spent on the green considerations of this home.
So I think, I think we're getting a consensus here in terms of, what's the...
Sorry. I think we're getting sort of, starting to get a consensus here in terms of what the commission feels are some deficiencies in the design. And I guess the question, I guess the question would be, should we ask the applicant if they feel it's feasible to make changes and bring it back in such a way that they think the commission can approve it?
Their other option is for us to deny it.
Right.
And then they could appeal it to the city council.
Actually, we would prefer if you would just, we've got a good message of the things that you like and some changes we want, we should do. So let us go back and work on that, and then come back to you. We would prefer to do it that way, rather than taking a denial and having to appeal it to the council. I don't think that is a good use of your time, staff's time, council's time, anybody. So let us go back and do that, so we've got some clear things going. And I'll find out some other information on some background that I'll be able to present to you next time, too.
Thank you. I think that would, I think that'd be a very constructive approach, and a very positive, you know, way, way forward. So we can, we're, we'll be taking motions separately on these, on these two resolutions, so we could go ahead and make a motion on 1315 now.
I, I have a question. Certainly, there are, you know, green components that can be included into the, into the design of the home. Is there a percentage beyond Title 24 that the planning commission is looking at achieving? Because not only because they, they bring back what the changes would be, adding solar, things like that, maybe looking into the gray water system and that type of thing, but you could also indicate that we'd like a 20% improvement beyond Title 24. I, I just, I'm curious as to, as to, is that kind of where you're going? Or were you just like, hey, come back, present what you're going to give us, and that's okay? I just, I was curious.
I think, I think of some of our more technically...
There, there's, the wording is actually that, that active and passive and active solar components are, I think, strongly encouraged on these projects. And there are, the, the German Passive House Institute actually has specific guidelines and scoring for, for what is a passive home, what is, what should be considered a passive home. So it, I guess that's a question for whether we want to see more passive, do you actually have them comply to the German Passive, Passive Institute? Or whether we want to just see more components? And I, I think that's a discussion for the, the commission. I would like to, the more, you know, I think the more, the better, but...
My biggest concern, I'm sorry. My biggest concern is that, you know, it's been pointed out, the, the house should respond to what's local as a priority. So the way the codes are going, you know, natural daylight, so that you don't have to turn on lights. Although the huge, significant thing about LEDs is the power usage is so minimal now. So we're not going to get a big payback from the natural lighting, but that's a, that's a big deal. The passive heating, I don't even heat my house 360, two days out of the year. And when my partner complains, I suggest that she get a sweater on.
I bet she likes that a lot, doesn't she?
I'll catch, I'll, I'll catch that back, I'm sure. But I don't think it's that hard to, to do some of these techniques. What, what concerns me the most is the, the nature of, we can't have a green marketed subdivision without these other issues. We, we have to have, the, the gray water thing to me is, is almost a, a shock reaction now. I don't think we necessarily have to put it out on the site in its entirety. I think we can, we can retain a certain amount for site usage, and then take it and put it in the sewage after we've used it three times. Then we build three houses, and we have the same amount of water we've used. And it's, it's, it's just mind-boggling to me. The solar costs have dropped dramatically, and, and the, and the cost of energy's gone up. You know, I think when 2007, when they probably did this 12 cents a kilowatt hour, I think we're at 15, 16, 17 now, maybe, in time of day usage, it may be higher than that. And, and so the payback period on these things is, is, is significant. And if you're doing things like the LEDs, your draw in the power is not that high. So the amount of power that you need, the square footage of the panels is significantly less. But I, I just think that the nature of our water issue, it's, it's, we have to have rainwater catchment, we have to have gray water, I think. And I'd, I'd love to see solar. I'd love to see solar in, in a way that everybody can see that it can be done without, they're not going to be blue panels, though.
You know, present day, the state-of-the-art is net zero.
Yep.
So our, you know, when this was proposed, they were, they were proposing state-of-the-art. So where, you know, my question is, where do we want to go with this?
I, I think to ask them to achieve net zero and see what their reaction is, what's the impact on the design.
I would agree.
Because if you could sell a house as a net-zero house, in an age that you could tell people your energy costs for the next 20 years are negligible, you know, in, in all honesty, I've, I've gotten our bills down to, you know, less than $1,000 a year for everything. That's water, sewer, gas, electric. If you, you can be done. We don't have anything exotic either.
I think that's the goal. I, I don't know if that's, net zero, I, I don't know if that's an achievable goal, you know? I, I think that in this particular situation, I mean, I don't, I just, I haven't, number one, I don't have the expertise to do the analysis, and number two, I don't have the data to do the analysis, but, but they do. And I think what we're asking is for them to come back and show us that they've made the effort to get as close to that as they can get. And if they, you know, I, I think if they don't, if they can't, for some reason, site constraints or whatever, they can't get there, they can't get there. But, you know, I, I think we've given them some ideas of what features that we'd like to see, and in terms of, you know, where to take that, we'd like to take it as far as they can, you know?
I, I think that's fair. And this last piece of discussion that you've had, I think has been very useful to inform what your expectation is. Because I wasn't, I mean, you gave me some examples of things you wanted to see in the plan, but I wanted to know where you were going with this. And that's, and that's what, and that's what you gave me, and I appreciate that. And that's what you gave the applicant. Because now they have something that they need to, they need to show it to you, and then they already do explain why they can't reach net zero, and what that incremental...
I think there's some things that we were also telling them, there's some things we would not like to see in the plan, like an air conditioner, for example, you know, a big furnace, kind of, you know? I mean, if, if they take it in that direction, then they can, you know, they can, maybe there's some savings to be made at the other end, in addition to the energy savings.
Yeah, I thank you. I mean, I, like I said, I think that, that last portion of the discussion was very useful in informing what the expectation is from our standpoint on staff, and what the applicant's expectation is, what they're supposed to come back with. Thank you.
I guess the other question would be that we should ask the applicant as well, is what would be a reasonable timeframe for you to feel that you could address this? Would 60 days be, two months be doable, or one month?
Yeah, that's basically what we were thinking, like by the, the second planning commission meeting in May, that we could have this done. And then also on, to maybe be helpful, we were talking, there's a Green Point rated number that we could use, so we could give you an evaluation in this system and show you all of the things. And then it has a number that is associated with it, so you have something to actually look at and evaluate. So we can do that for coming up with some sort of a system to evaluate the green building.
Right. And if you really want to sell us, you can do the current plan and your revised plan in the, in your Green Point scale.
I'll see what we can do. Great, thanks.
Yeah. So then we would continue to, basically for six weeks, second meeting, second meeting in May, April, May, no, that's four weeks, second meeting in May.
I'm okay if you just continue it to date to be determined, and then we'll renotice.
To date uncertain?
Yeah, well, we, I have no problem renoticing.
Great, okay. Very good. So do we, do we have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll move, we continue this item to date uncertain.
Second.
Second, so we have a motion and a second?
Second, so we have a motion, and a second? Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call then, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Lur.
Aye.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Aye.
Chairperson Teft.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. So let's move on to the second resolution, which is that we make future approvals of conditional use permits of this area, in this area administrative. What is your pleasure on that?
I would request that that get continued as well. I'd like to put some of these, memorialize some of these things into the resolution, unless you absolutely hate the idea, at which point, go ahead and get rid of it. But my idea would be to take some of the things that come out of this approval and incorporate that in to inform future applicant applications. So what the expectation is, because obviously, I wasn't here back then and didn't have a lot, I mean, a lot of the information you're giving me out here is the first time I'm hearing it. So it was very informative, and I would like, if we're going to even look at having a staff-level option for some of these, I would like to memorialize the requirements and the expectations for the individual homes and middles moving forward. And so the resolution that's before you now is not ready for primetime.
Okay, I think that's very reasonable. So do we have a motion, unless there's further discussion? Do we have a motion to continue? That matter as well.
Can I say one thing? I'm less sure that I like the in-house review. Because if we make any mistake on these guidelines, then it's much harder to challenge the nature of the error that's been done in terms of aesthetics. I mean, my judgment is I think these things are going to be very strong in making it work. But if it doesn't, somebody can pull something forward and say, I've met all the guidelines. But then if it's, if the sequel review is there, there's the option to say, we don't like it, and here's our evidence. Because this is scenic one, and it's not working. So to me, it's kind of a fail-safe. I'm willing to listen to your concerns, but as long as we have it as an item here, I just wanted to say that, that's all.
Well, if we can, yeah, if we continue it, we might want to continue, we might want to... Actually, my suggestion, my feeling, what I would prefer, is that we just bring... I would like to, as a commission, see a few more homes in this development. Because we're looking at, we're looking at one piece of the puzzle, but at some point, we need to also look at how it's all fitting together. And so I, my own feeling is it's a little premature at this point to go the administrative route. Maybe at some time in the future, that should be brought back up. So if we continue it, maybe we need to continue it longer than the other one, or maybe we just need to deny it and bring it back up again.
Why don't you just table it? And we'll have the discussion after we've had one or two more of these and see where you're at. I was literally doing it because I saw the comprehensive nature of the design guidelines and said, hmm, these things are going to be pretty locked into what they look like. I mean, there's very little discretion that we have. And so I thought, well, that would be something, one last thing that has to come to Planning Commission. And that was making an assumption that you were comfortable with where we were at with this after the discussion we've had today. You're not. And for good reason, again, having that history now that I didn't have before. So I can certainly appreciate that. And then, moving forward, you know, I'm not going to forget, you know? So as these things come forward, and we can see a few of them, I think that's a good point. So I think tabling this component of it is probably a worthwhile endeavor.
Well, as more Bay Planning documents go, these design guidelines are certainly a Ferrari, a new Ferrari, but we're just not sure how to drive it yet. Okay, so do we have a motion then to not approve Resolution 14-15?
You can literally just table the discussion.
Oh, can we?
Yeah, I mean, you could just table the discussion. You don't have to do anything with it.
We don't have to do either.
Great.
All right. So then, moving on to unfinished business, we have none at this time. And new business, we have none. So we'll move on to Planning Commissioner comments. Why don't you start, yourself? Catherine, no? Okay.
I probably said more than I should have tonight.
Michael? I have a little bit of sort of leftover, I guess, concern about the project that was brought forward at our last meeting and the whole discussion that we had. And I really feel that at some point, this commission ought to begin to address the idea of view protection and private views, just to be ahead of that topic. And so I would just like to, you know, I would just like to suggest that we, and more in terms of looking at what sort of design guidelines, what sort of, you know, what sort of process might begin to address that view and might already, in fact, address that view. So I don't know if we want to do that in conjunction when the guidelines come back or if we want to do it as a separate discussion or...
They are coming back at the May 5 meeting.
Okay.
I have direction from the council that these be through us and to the city council in the first meeting in June, which is like the ninth or something. So this will be, so this will be coming back forward. I'm actually halfway done with putting them back into a singular document. I'll be done with that rest of it tomorrow. It'll be, I'll call that my rough, rough draft. I'm probably going to post it for the folks that are out there interested on the website Thursday. So that, I've already given out what the Planning Commission's done to this point along with the minutes that went along with those decisions. And so, you know, the NECO group, the group, the neighborhood group that we met with a few weeks ago over at the community center has them, and as do some of the other, you know, representative development folks that are out there in the community. And I've provided the information to them. So with any luck, that'll be out there. And so we can start having that conversation and start looking at, I'm going to start looking at what other things these groups and individuals are interested in. You're probably going to get a, here's your work so far, Planning Commission, in a singular document. And here's some things that some of the other folks are out there interested in talking about. What do you want to do with it? Are there things in here you want to incorporate? Some of that discussion does involve view. Where we go with that is partially the question because the council sort of directed that we not include view in this, at this point. But I'll have more to say on that specific piece of it when I bring it back in May, at the May 5 meeting. But again, I will have what some of these other groups are looking to achieve. So you'll have a sort of parallel discussion about both. And so you can decide where you want to go with that. And then we would have the ability to have one more meeting before the city council meets. And, you know, if we absolutely can't go to council then, then we'll all be telling them that.
I mean, my concern, my concern very honestly is that this not sort of be left floating too long as an undefined issue because it tends to be, when it's that way, it tends to be very polarizing, you know? And I think if you were, if we were to eventually get to some sort of little bit more specificity, you know, then some of the people who are very much against it, you know, against view protection would be, oh, well, I could be for that. I'm just against view protection. You see what I'm saying? I think view protection is always like saying radioactive waste, you know? Whereas, it makes people imagine things that I don't think are in anybody's head at the moment, you know? So the more we can kind of start to define that a little bit, I think the better off the community will be.
Your point's well taken. And I, other than having some conversations with the various folks out there about what they're interested, I don't actually know specifically what they want to do. I know what the city's looked at in the past, and I know some of the things they want to do are not achievable through design guidelines. Part of the discussion has revolved around floor area ratio. And I will tell you this, we cannot do that through design guidelines. Those are standards like setbacks and need to be incorporated into the code. Not to say that over time, we can't do that, but the mechanism is not a document that's an interim design guideline that shows you how things look, and then you're going to shove things that are standards in there and then expect people to follow those. That's a bit difficult to swallow. Those things really need to be an ordinance level type thing versus, you know, telling what the expectation is with the way roofs are designed and setbacks, you know, upper floors are. That's a different scenario, I think.
Right. Well, and I think, I think that, I think that, I think the fantasy that's out there among some people is that there's going to be an ordinance that says you can't block anybody else's view. And I don't think, that doesn't exist. I mean, honestly, that, there is no such ordinance anywhere. So I just, you know, I just think if we can bring the temperature level down a little bit on this, it wouldn't hurt anything.
Well, certainly, that's the interest of some of the folks that are out there. So some of this information and the discussion will be had at the May 5 meeting because that's the indication that I have, is that's what they're going to give me and not what they're going to want. And so that's, just to address that component of it, that's going to be something you're going to be talking about, what that means and what folks are interested in, that type of thing.
Thank you. Good, okay. So basically, we're doing it in two meetings, two meetings from now. We're going to be there.
Can I ask one additional question?
Sure, of course.
Scott, would it be possible, and I know a white paper is probably out of the scope of this, but at least for anywhere along the coast, Pismo, Grover Beach, any of the other beach communities, if they have any view protection or any verbiage, if someone from, I mean, I know you have limited staff, but that would be good for us to know and be able to use it as an educational product.
I've had outreach in this area, I think I might have mentioned this before in the past, when I worked for Pismo, it was one of the things we, I was on the radar for a little while, and so I was looking around, and, you know, Royal Grandi has view protection ordinances, Grover Beach has them, they're specific. Grover Beaches is like a percentage of your view. And they measure angles and so forth with it as to what's acceptable and what's not. The question, though, in the subjective portion of it that I've seen, you know, kind of bandied about is where you're measuring that from, you know? Common sense says it measures from the window, but I've been involved with the scenario where we were before a Planning Commission, and they said it was from furniture placement. So that was a little out in left field. They don't really now, they don't do that now so much, but that was something that came up then.
But aren't most of those that are very specific, don't they mostly involve vegetation? I mean, that's been, from what I've looked at, that's been...
Grover just evolves where you're putting a structure. And if there's someone behind you, it prioritizes their right and gives them a percentage of the view they're able to. And then you, honestly, you fight over what that means and where the angle's measured from and how you measure it and what goes on with that. I mean, because Grover Beach, kind of like, kind of like us, many of the areas in town were never designed to provide specific views that could be protected. And so they just, I mean, most of their lots are cut fill pads up on the hill. I mean, they were just designed to be the cheapest you could implement, you know? I mean, and so when you sort of retroactively put those in place, you end up with issues. And so they experience those issues at Planning Commission and city council meetings, anyway.
So, Scott, we're kind of getting into this, probably shouldn't, but how do you prioritize one right against the other?
That's the, that's the nut.
Yeah, that's when, that's where the, you know, that's, I've had friends in other towns that have view protection ordinances that they put in after the fact, and, you know, most of them describe it as a fistfight, you know, in the streets. And that's kind of what it boils down to because people don't agree. And all of the folks that, you know, I probably have contact with, seven or eight planners out there in towns that I speak with regularly that, you know, have variations of view protection or policies in certain areas of town. Some of them, hey, we put them in when we designed the subdivisions to protect the views that we designed the subdivisions to have. Those ones weren't great. It's the retroactive ones that are the tough ones. And I've never heard any of my planner brethren tell me that it was done real well and it's smooth. So you're right, it's, you know, the art is in the details, I guess.
Because along with those rights are dollar figures.
Clearly.
Okay, so pencil-in-along meeting.
16 hours or...
Yeah. Okay, so if there's no more comment from the commission, Scott, do you have any remarks you'd like to make?
The only remark I was going to make is the design guidelines are coming to your next meeting. Here you go.
Okay, so then I guess it will be time for us to adjourn and start resting up. Thank you.